For it to click. Okay, we're at 6:30 PM. So this is the call to order for Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Number 1821. Today is February 22, 2022. We have a quorum, but I don't see Frank. Is Frank on?
He's not on.
Okay, then David, would you please sit in in his stead?
Door.
Um, so we have a quorum with all five. Um, for added agenda items, there is going to be a piece of correspondence that Ruth wants to discuss concerning March 3th PZC, their Planning and Zoning Commissioner Overview Training Invitation. And I don't know if we need a motion to add something under correspondence, or we can just take it up under correspondence. Are you guys comfortable just taking it up? Or do you want a motion to add it?
Just take it. We don't need a motion.
Okay.
Correspondence is correspondence.
That's fine. Um, the legal notice is for public hearing, PZ 2022-02, 268 South Main Street. It's our request for a zone change from B2 to R1. That was read onto the hearing record at the previous meeting, so it does not need to be read into the record again. That brings us to public participation. Is there anything that a member of the public would like to discuss that is not listed on the agenda? Okay. Hearing nothing. We'll move on to approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was February 8, 2022. Does anybody have anything they saw in the minutes we need to address? Okay, hearing none. If people are satisfied, a motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make a motion. We approve the regular meeting minutes of meeting 1820, held on February 8, 2022, as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by David. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Um. All those in favor of adopting the minutes as presented, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. The minutes are adopted. The next order of business is receipt of applications. We have a application, PZ 2022-3. It's for 298 South Main Street. It's a site plan review for new construction up for auto sales. And we won't be discussing it tonight. We're just acknowledging the receipt. Do we have anything under?
Could I?
Yes.
May I interject? Bob Arsenal is here to describe this. If we could move it to new business. You wanted to give an overview of this project.
Okay, is that okay with the commission?
Sure.
Do we, do we need a motion to add it under new business, or can we just take it up?
New business is new business.
Okay, if you're comfortable, then we'll just take it up under new business. Um, do we have anything under performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, road acceptance?
We do not.
Okay, then we will move to the continuation of public hearing, PZ 2022-2 for 268 South Main Street. It's a request for a zone change from B2 to R1. The applicant is with us tonight, so I will turn the floor over to Gil Tugus to explain his request and present his application.
Should I proceed, or?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. Yeah, I've been going, trying to do this for the last, I don't know, four or five years. I've been up in front of the zoning port of appeals, this, that, and the other thing, and been denied, 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 and I have, I haven't had. I tried running three different businesses out of there myself, and it was unsuccessful. Uh, I think, and that was probably 1987, 88. And I haven't had a business in there since. It's been vacant. And I don't, I'm at my wit's end. I don't know what to do. The traffic by my place is terrible for any kind of in and out to get, to have a business there, to get in and out of the parking lot that I have. So, yeah, I just, I've been a taxpayer for 35 years. I don't see why I can't, well, probably longer than that. I can't see why I can't do what I want with my property, but I guess that's up to you people. It's kind of, I don't know. Ironic, but, and I also had Rand over there. He inspected my property, fire marshal been through my property. And, yeah, they all said, you know, you, you just got to get approval from the town. I said, okay. And the last time I talked to Rand, now that, I guess he quit, right? Uh, I talked to him about a month ago. He said, I hope that everything goes well in the, in the in the hearing tonight. I said, I hope so too. He wished that I could do what I want with my property. And I said, yeah, I would like to do that. What I, what I want to do with my own property, yeah. So I'll just finish with that.
Okay, well, from a zoning perspective, the whole strip of Route 5 is zone business, and it's a state highway corridor. Um, we had a comment on the record at the last time we discussed this when we opened the hearing, which we didn't get in our packets, but Ruth Ann read into the record. It, it, somebody in opposition to the concept of adding residential zone there, and I will turn it over to either Ruth Ann or Mike D'Amato. We had raised, or I should say, Mike Kowalski raised a question on, did this really need a zone change? And if you could help us with the answer to that.
Okay, um, what I would like to do first, because yes, I want to address that issue of finding some pathway. Uh, there's a letter in Mr. Tugus's file that stated September 25, 2019, and it was written from, by the, at the time, Assistant Town Planner Judy Masso. And it's in regards to 268 South Main Street, and it's addressed to Mr. Tugus. Says, "Thank you for coming in earlier this week to discuss your options for your property at 268 South Main Street in East Windsor. Upon reviewing your property's history and various department records, I offer the following. Per the conditions of the 1988 site plan approval, residential use was terminated once the beauty salon occupied the building. Per the conditions of said approval, any change of use must obtain permits and approvals. The most recent variance request, 2019-03, to allow residential use was denied. As you may be aware, using the property as a three-family residence in a B2 zone has been a violation of East Windsor's zoning regulations since 2009. In order to achieve compliance, you have two options. The first is to maintain a commercial, non-residential use at the subject site. Current use table is enclosed, that, or to apply for the following two permits. A zone change from B2 to R1 and special permit site plans for a three-family home, the maximum number of units in the R1 zone, when a lot is less than four acres. And the rest is, for your convenience, I have included the applications and maps and such. When Mr. Tugus came into the office explaining that he had tried to get a variance, you know, immediately I thought, oh, you know, zone change would be the path. Based on Mike's question from the last meeting about what would be allowed in the B2 zone without a zone change, um, if you kept the commercial aspect of the property, it can be a dwelling unit on the top floor. And then in conversations, um, later with Mike, we thought, could we do something special, with a special use permit, similar to what we did at Pasco Commons, where, um, also allowed for some living quarters on that main floor, provided that an aspect of commercial is still part of that building. Mike, did you want to add anything to that?
I think that's a good overview at this point.
I guess I would ask the question, um, for the town staff, wouldn't a zone change of one parcel in the middle of a business zone, um, which is the Route 5 corridor be spot zoning?
Yes, it's inconsistent with the VOCD. Yep.
Okay, may I interject for one second? I have neighbors that live in a house. They have a house there. They live there. It's residential. So I don't understand now this, I can't, I can't have a residential because my neighbors do. They're in the B2 zone. They're on Route 5. I don't understand. Please clarify. My house is a dilapidated building. It's falling apart. It was built in the 1800s. It's un, as it sits, unusable as commercial space. I can, can, continue, I can confirm that. I had Dunkedons offer me money in the past to buy the property, but they didn't want the property with the house on it. They wanted it to demo it. So therefore, I cannot foresee that building being used for commercial use at all. But, I don't know. I mean, it's easy for you to say, oh, it, it should still be commercial, but you don't own the building. You, you don't understand the dilemma that I face. I'm, it, it's impractical, not functional for a commercial space. So I don't know what to say.
Is there, um, any questions or input other commissioners would like to provide?
I, I'd like to verify, is, is the property next door R1, or is it still a B2? The abutting property?
I will look.
It looked to me on the map like everything was the same zone. It may be a pre-existing use.
It might be non-conforming use, right? That's what I'm trying to determine.
Right, and this, in, in looking at the Route 5 corridor study, there was suggestions that the single-family homes could remain as single-family homes. I think in this case, a site plan approval was granted making that a commercial use.
Single-family home, not two or three family, correct?
Correct.
But the zoning is still as a B2?
I need to look to see what that zone was. Right now. My sense was that those that would be remaining would be non-conforming, like legal non-conforming.
I, I believe that the abutment is 266.
Okay. 266 is B2, and it is owned by White Eagle Trans, White, White Eagle Transportation, Inc. And then 272 on the other side is also B2. I don't know who NBM Associates LLC is, but that's who owns them.
And who, um, since we don't have a copy of the comment letter that you received on the record, so that Gil Tugus is aware of that, if he hasn't received a copy, can you indicate who opposed his application? And that it's a business zone, basically?
I know, he's the treasurer of the Historic Society. I'm gonna have to look at my emails to get to that, so. I will, I have to look in.
Okay, I just want to be transparent with him that, yeah.
Minutes.
Yeah, that's what I was looking to see if.
Um.
Garrison Hudgens.
Yep.
So who's living at the property now? Is there somebody currently living there? Tenant? I guess that's a question for Gil.
That, there's residential use on the second floor of my building. It has been approved since a long time, since we initially started B2 zone. We had residential on, on the second floor and commercial on this, I mean, residential on the second floor, commercial on the first.
So right now, he's in legal standings. He's, he's good the way he is now.
If he had a, if he had a commercial operation there. Because from what I heard Ruth Ann say is, um, there was some question without a commercial use, if it was legal. Or did I misunderstand?
If there's commercial space that's vacant, and I mean, I would imagine that there's instances where that's happened to other dwellings that have commercial on the first floor and business upstairs that the commercial tenant is not, you know.
Is gone.
Yeah, is gone. Yeah.
But the, uh, the statement you read earlier, when it was dealing with the hair salon, did that say that the residential aspect was forfeited when the hair salon went in?
That's how I read that letter. That was 1988. Don't know if there were some changes in the regs between then. But it looks like in 2019, the Assistant Town Planner was saying you'd have to maintain commercial use.
Any other questions from commission members? Do you, do you, as the commission, feel the need to keep the public hearing open, or do you have the information you need at this point in time?
I'm good.
Okay, if everybody is good with the information we've received, then we could close the public hearing. I know we won't act on it tonight because we don't have a draft motion, but we could close the public hearing if there's no more information forthcoming.
You want to check if there's anyone else on the public that would like to comment at all?
Good point. Is there anyone from the public who has joined us that would like to comment on this application?
Yeah, I, I just have a question. I don't know, you know, planning and zoning law, but, or, you know, I thought, I always was assumed that this project was a, like a mixed retail, multi, you know, use project. Is that not the case? It's?
That's what its history was, back in the late 80s through early 90s. There was a hair salon on the first floor, and the owner of the hair salon lived upstairs. And after that point, I have no knowledge, so I would have to defer to the applicant.
Yeah, I owned a coffee shop after that there, and a mail, there's a like UPS type thing, but other than that, that was it. That was the last of it. I don't know how long ago that was. So now I sit on it with a half-acre building, and somebody living on the second floor, and the building's decaying, but that's in there, you know, I deal with it, I guess. I don't know if anybody could offer me like $100,000 to get there down, so I could put up a, a commercial establishment. Sure, sounds like a plan to make, but I don't see nobody gonna be offering me that kind of money, and I don't have it either, but, um, also, um, uh, who was the, who was the oppo, opponent to my going, turning this back to residential?
Just before I, I'm sorry, Mr. Tugus.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to skip over.
That's okay. Yeah, my other comment was just maybe to keep, continue the public hearing, uh, just in case you do get, so you can take in other information that, I mean, it sounds like it's, there's a little bit of confusion generally about how to proceed here. I don't know if you, you want to give yourself the opportunity to take in more information, or do you think you got enough, I guess? So I was just suggesting maybe.
I, I, I take it at this point, where I, I'm in a no-win situation. I'm not gonna go anywhere with the town, even though I've owned a property, paid property tax all these years, 35 years. I have nothing to stand on. It's kind of crazy being an American that I have to, have to go through this, but that's beyond, that's besides the point. It's my property. I should be able to do what I want. I, I don't know. Whatever happened 30 years, 35 years ago, you gonna hold me to that? It's just ridiculous. I might as well go look in Communist Russia. Maybe they have better, a better system. Well, it's the truth. That's the way I feel. I don't mean, I don't mean to be rude, but.
Well, we have, um, a set of regulations and statutory framework and legal history that we are bound to follow. Um, is there anybody else who would like to comment on this?
There you go. Um. So, what would be an option if to convert it to a complete, like residential? Does a two-family make a difference with three families?
Like you said, you keep the public hearing open till the next meeting. It's not gonna hurt anything.
No, it isn't. So, why don't we continue it to the next meeting, and, um, that will give town staff the ability to draft motions that we can consider. Does somebody want to make a motion to continue this to the next meeting, which is March, March 8?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We continue the public hearing for PZ 2022-02 for 286 South Main Street, a zoning change from B2 to R1 until our next meeting, uh, which will be on March 8.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. So it's continued, and we'll um, see if there's more comment or more information at the next meeting and take it up for a decision then. Uh, we have no new public hearings, no old business. And under new business, we were going to hear from the applicant on PZ 2022-3, which is, um, a site plan review for 298 South Main Street.
Yes.
Question before we begin, is this just gonna be a presentation, or are we gonna ask full questions, or what's the deal?
Um. My sense is, the applicant wanted to present, and, um, if they have questions, I think there's no harm in asking them, so that they can be prepared for next time.
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, Bob Arsenal, I'm the engineer for the project. I just wanted to make a brief presentation so that the commission was aware of what the project was about, because I know we have to come back. We also have an application before the Wetlands Commission, so I know that that has to be taken care of before, before your commission can, but I just wanted to make a, a brief presentation of what the project entailed. So if I, do I have permission to share my screen here?
Absolutely. Hmm, I have to get over to that spot first. There we go.
It says it's disabled.
I just clicked.
Oh, okay.
Get to the right screen. Good.
Okay. This is, uh, this is a project for 298 South Main Street, um, for New Construction Company LLC. Uh, Mr. Arvin Persaud is the owner. It's just north of the, uh, the town, the town line. Um, as a matter of fact, our southern border is, is on South Windsor. Um, as a matter of fact, our southern border is, is on South Windsor, right over in this location here, north is to the right. Um, it's point five three acres in the B, B two zone, of course, and what he's looking to do is, um. Auto sales and repairs. This is the site plan itself. I'll zoom in a little bit for you here. It's gonna be a fifteen hundred square foot building, um, with fifteen cars of parking. Which is all the shaded gray area. There's gonna be three overhead doors on the northern side. And I do have the building plans that I could show you for this too. And then another overhead door to the rear and a pedestrian door in the front. Basically, the cars would be coming in from the north. And the rear would just be as an exit for the cars after they're, uh, they're taken out. And he would like to have about an area out here for four display cars. And this meets the zoning as far as setbacks, you know, from the, from the property line and, and from, uh. Uh, the building and everything as far as this display area goes. And I'll show you the building quickly. This is what he's proposing. This would be the, the pedestrian door in the front. Um, on the, uh, on that side, and this is the north, the north side with the three, the three overhead bays. So again, looking here, um, the site is fairly wooded. And we'll be removing obviously some of the woods, but keeping as much of the, the, uh, the woods as we can. We have the entrance right here off of Route five. One of the comments that Ruth Ann mentioned to me is that the fire marshal usually access a twenty-six foot. Radius on these. I had a twenty-two, so this red line here shows you is, is the increase is twenty-six, which is what I would do. We have sanitary sewer, we have water, storm drainage, um, the entire site is pretty much. Uh, very, very sandy material. So what I'm proposing is a collection. Uh, to a catch basin at a low point here with underground recharge system. Which, which will actually hold right up through a hundred year storm. There's almost. No discharge at all, but as far as an emergency, I had one. A pipe going out to a, a stone pad out here, uh, for the discharge from there. Or to, this would be the landscape plan. And we're proposing some landscaping around the front in this part of the building. Um, couple of, uh, trees here and, uh, mostly it's. What we're, what I was proposing was a couple of flowering dogwoods for ornamental trees, um, some hydrangea, rhododendron. Arborvitae's, that sort of thing around the, around the side in the front of the building. As far as lighting goes. We're proposing four post lights, uh, one in this location here, which will take care of the. Illuminating the display area, one to the rear for the, for safety of the, uh, rear area. One on the side over here and then one in the corner by the walk over here, but we're also planning on having, uh. The wall packs on the building between the doors here and next to the front door. All the lighting will be, you know, fully shielded. With, uh, you know, full cutoff, uh, that kind of thing. So. And the, uh, the dumpster pad we're proposing to the, to the back, to the rear here. And this gives you an idea of, that's the wrong one. Okay, this is, this is what we are proposing for lighting. We have the, the post lights here, but actually we may be changing this to go with more of a colonial theme. Um, as far it, rather than the shoebox lights here, so we'll probably be addressing that before the next meeting. And then these would be the wall, the fully shielded wall packs, uh, which, which we'd be using. There will be, um. Concrete walk through here. Everything is gonna be pretty much at grade here with no curbing here. But there will be curbing around the edges of the, of the parking lot. Um, and that's pretty much the project. It's, it's fairly straightforward. Um, and like I said, we'll be coming back, obviously, after we get. Comments from the town and so forth. So if there's any questions or you have any overall comments, something you'd like to. Like to add to it before the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Um, I'll just start. There is a mobile home and a deck, a budding your property line and it looks really, really close.
Yes, I know.
Um. My.
There's actually a shed that comes over onto our property too, right here.
Oh, well, I guess I, for the lighting, will it impact? I'll say the windows of the mobile home or will it project down so it doesn't go in their windows?
It'll project down because everything, the, the light, let me go back to the other sheet here.
The light. You're just gonna need a photometric plan, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, we will be. And the photo, the, uh. The, the light here will be projecting, uh, to the south and this one will be projecting down to the, to the, uh, to the east. Um, and then the building lights will themselves will be fully shielded, just cast down. So we shouldn't have any, uh, any light pollution over in here. The other thing I was thinking about too is. The only thing I showed here, um, was a flowering dogwood, but. We're gonna be, there is some trees here. There are lots of trees here that are gonna be coming out. And I was thinking maybe it would be better to put some, some evergreen trees, uh, through this area. Instead of, instead of that dogwood, which would give us more of a, more of a shielding, you know, to the, to the mobile home as well. So that's something that I was gonna be addressing before the next commit, next meeting too.
And the property on the south border, which. Maybe it's in South Windsor.
Yes.
Is that a residential home? If it's not in East Windsor?
It's a, it's a residence, yes.
And is. Um, I'll say South Windsor and that neighbor aware of this?
Uh, yes, it was, it was brought to the attention of the town that, uh, that this application was coming before this commission.
Um, but is the neighbor aware if it's a residential house in South Windsor in an area that maybe is zoned residential that they're getting? This on their property line?
Quite honestly, I'm not sure what the, what the zoning is over here. I don't know if it's a resident.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I don't, but I do know it's, it's a, it's a residential home from what I've seen. I think I believe it's a ranch, a ranch home. Which is actually near the front of the property, if I, if I remember.
And then my last question would be in the auto repair operation, are you going to be painting cars?
No, he's, I don't believe he's gonna be doing any painting cars, but I can verify that with him, with the applicant.
Cuz I would be concerned about, um. Odor and VOCs on a residential neighbor.
Yeah, I'll.
That's very close if they're painting.
Okay, I will, I will check with him on that. I don't think he's gonna be doing that. I think it's mostly just purchasing, purchasing the vehicles. Doing the repairs, cleaning them up and resale, is from what I understand.
Okay, other members of the commission, questions? Things to think about?
Yeah, um, is where you're putting in your driveway, is that an existing curb cut or you're creating a new curb cut?
There is actually a curb cut there between these trees. This is the existing here. I'll show you on this one. There's actually an opening in, between the trees here and it's not an official curb cut, but it's been used. To get access to this open area back here. So it is, it is, it has been used, but we will have to go for a curb cut for it.
That's getting at it. That's state road, so you're gonna need to get permission for the curb cut.
Yes.
Um. As well as, I'd like to see you kinda clean up as to what existing trees you intend to leave behind. So you have a better idea of what the overall landscape plan is gonna look like?
Yeah, we do have the, this, this line right here is the proposed tree line. So the, all of this will be remaining. We're gonna try and keep.
You're gonna have trees blocking your display area then?
Just, just part of it, just, just from here. Uh, but it's, this is not really heavily wooded. This is very light. It's light trees and it'll be cleaned up, so.
Okay. And I think there might be a requirement that you're gonna have to do some type of a, uh. Uh, stormwater treatment on the catch basin that you're adding there.
Yes, we do. I have. This is the catch basin here. It's the double chambered type with the oil and grease separator. Prior to this, prior to, uh, going into, um. There are the underground, um, cul tech infiltrators. Um, there's gonna be, there's enough here to handle up to a hundred year storm. I, it's, it's all sand and I, it, to, to be conservative, I didn't even consider infiltration. So I have enough storage for all of the, all of the, uh, all of the runoff for up to a hundred year storm, but. But obviously, once you figure in the infiltration, discharge is gonna be nothing. There's really gonna be no discharge.
Okay, just in your previous, uh, presentation, you didn't mention any stormwater treatment, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I should have brought that up.
Okay. Uh, it's all I have at this point.
Anyone else? Um, Mike question for you. On the front of the building facing the street, do we have a architectural standard that the building be made of? Part, um. Not all one material, I'll say.
Yeah, um, I assume.
This looks like one material.
Yeah, they're, they're, this is not gone through a plan review, Ruth. Well, I don't wanna speak for Ruth, but I don't think based on the timing, we've really done any review of it. So we'll, we will run it through the plan review and identify that, but yes, there is, um. Going to need to be, for lack of a better word, improvements made to the portion of the building that faces the stream.
Yeah, I'll mention that too.
Oh, and there, there was nothing brought up about signage either on this.
No, he, I'm still discussing that with him as to where, what he wants for a sign and where he wants it. Uh, I'm assuming it's gonna be out, out in the front someplace, but he hasn't, uh, he hasn't determined that yet. So we'll be coming in with that. Is, if, if he doesn't have it by that time, can we come in as a separate application just for the signage? Or should we keep it all together?
Yeah, there, there's really no. Review process, like a freestanding sign requires special permits, so. We, we can, we can note that no signage has been reviewed as part of the application.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike or Ruth Ann, that you wanna? Note at this point? Obviously, it's gonna have to go through the town engineer too.
Yeah.
Yep, the plans are in his hands, um. So, yeah, I'll, I'll keep in touch with, with Bob on our review.
And I have one question. You said the next meeting was March eighth?
Yes.
This be coming up on that meeting too? The only reason I ask is because I know you, I heard you say you were going back to regular in-person meetings. And I'm supposed to be going in for some back surgery. So I didn't know if you were doing hybrid meetings or just in person.
They'll be hybrid. You'd have the option of attending by zone if you're.
Okay.
If you're ready to do so at that time.
Okay, I don't wanna have to come in in a wheelchair.
Don't blame you.
I've been putting this off long enough.
Okay, did? We discuss it adequately? Are we ready to move to the other business? Okay, under other business, we haven't.
So I say thank you.
You're welcome.
And have a good night.
We'll see you next meeting.
All right.
We have an informal discussion to include Lucy Foster regarding tiny homes. Is this something you wanna introduce, Ruth Ann? Or are we just gonna give her the floor? You're on mute. Ruth Ann, you're on mute.
Okay, um, so Lucy's been in touch with the planning office. She's had, um, a few. Conversations or emails back and forth with Mike as well. Has an interest in East Windsor and in tiny homes and wanted to give us her perspective. On the issue as we're, um. Have an upcoming hearing on accessory dwelling units and thought it was a, a good time for her to come and speak to you. So, go ahead, Lucy.
Hi, nice to meet you all. Um, my name's Lucy Foster. Um, my husband and I would like to park a tiny house on wheels. At my grandparents' property at ninety-five Miller Road in Broadbrook. Um, this would allow for us to live in close proximity to them and be able to help with their day to day. They're in their eighties, so they could use a little bit of help. Um, to pay them because it's particularly difficult with them being alone. Uh, tiny house living is an affordable and environmentally sustainable living solution that allows for accessibility to family and financial freedom. Um, and a tiny house on wheels is what we're interested in and. How that differs from an RV is that it's not motorized and how it differs from a manufactured home is that it's still like a house. Just not on a foundation, it's on a trailer with wheels. And the reason why it has wheels is for the flexibility to be able to move it should you need to relocate. It wouldn't be relocated frequently, um. And I've sort of talked to the planning and zoning, um, commission, or excuse me, staff, and the regulations don't allow for tiny houses on wheels. I'm considering a tax amendment and I thought it would be beneficial to discuss informally. Have a conversation, answer any questions that you have and hear any of your concerns.
We've talked about this for the last couple of years, more, more than one time. And I think the commission was leaning forward trying to draft some regulations to make this possible, I believe.
I know we talked about the accessory dwelling units and the granny pod kind of concept, which this is just the reverse.
Yeah, reverse granny pod. Yeah, my grandparents already live in the house and we just wanna be able to relocate to be close to them. And it is a little bit more financially feasible and realistic in terms of time because there's already tiny houses that have been built. And we could just buy a used one, relocate it to my grandparents' property and we'll be able to help them without having to go through the whole construction process.
The one thing we didn't really talk about is the on wheels concept. We definitely. Were, I think, contemplating the. Accessory dwelling unit concept, which this basically is, but the on wheels, we never really discussed.
If I could just jump in, so I have spoken to Lucy a couple of times and we, we've been kind of talking through this and, um. I, I started kind of looking around, uh, at different things that we can do to create a distinction between. An RV that is, you know, a Winnebago that someone just buys, you know, that place on the side of ninety-one that we all pass and, and wants to park on the property. But also a mobile manufactured home, um, cuz there's, it's sort of three separate categories. And I, I think, you know, there's some regulations, some zoning regulations which use a lot of, um. Really interesting, uh, language and requirements. For things that, that other parts of the state refer to as cottage communities. And obviously, that's not what we're dealing with here. But the, some of the distinctions that they make for these smaller units, I think, can be applied. Um, the other thing that, that Lucy and I talked about was that the state of Maine actually passed legislation, which, which. And created a definition for a tiny home, um, to make it separate and distinct from some of these other things. So I, I do think there is enough here, you know, from what I'm, I'm looking at in, in my notes and the various. Um, language that I've been able to pull and what we've discussed to, to actually rough something out. Um, so that we could create a process for these to be allowed, but not have to allow other types of structures. Like a mobile manufactured home. You know, there are distinctions between the two. Like a mobile manufactured home. You know, there are distinctions between the two. Statute says that a mobile manufactured home, having its narrowest dimension of not less than twenty-two feet, has to be treated like a single-family home. But a tiny house is much smaller. Mobile homes, you know, the mobile manufactured homes cannot generally be towed by a, by a traditional passenger vehicle. You can't hook up a mobile manufactured home to the back of your, you know, your, your SUV and haul it off your property. They are not what I would consider to be immediately capable of being moved from a site. And then there are conditions and requirements, no composting toilets, or they must be skirted, they must have driveway access. You know, you can require a residency affidavit. There are things we can do to, to really ensure that this is something that I think. You know, is feasible, but we wanted to bring it before you, before we had her endeavor into the text amendment land.
What would differentiate this from a tow behind camper?
From a tow behind camper. Between this and a, and a tiny house, well, I think that number one. There's a, probably a difference that we can create based upon utilities. I think that there's also. More substantial requirements, and Lucy can shake her head yes or no, related to. How they're constructed, because a, a mobile home or something, your trailer. Is not into designed for year-round living, and so things like insulation and roofing materials, et cetera. But the, the main language specifically says something that does not include the term trailer, semi-trailer, camp trailer. Recreation of vehicle or manufactured housing.
Yeah, I, I would agree with all the points that you made i- i- in regards to utilities. It has actual plumbing. Insulation, roofing, it's built just like a house, except for it's on a smaller scale and sits on. A trailer on wheels, like Mike said, for moveability, not readily able to move it, but. As an option. For example, we, there are, there's a tiny house for sale. I mean, they're everywhere, but there's one in Maine or New Hampshire. And we say, hey, we would like that one. They're gonna, you know, hitch it up to a truck and bring it to Broadbrook, Connecticut. That's how they're gonna move it. It's just on wheels just for the purpose of the transportation, but it is constructed like a house, framing. Insulation, drywall or paneling, heating, all of the utilities, washer dryer hookup. To, you know, plumbing.
I mean, they have, I've, I've been in many, many years, and they have ones that are considered, they call them park models. Which are identical to things. They're, they have roof shingles, but they still have the ability to be hooked up and towed around.
Mike, question for you in your looking at regulations and drafting. There's setback requirements and things for this, right? You couldn't put it in your front yard or?
Oh, I think that the, the approach here would probably be a special permit. An accessory used by special permit. So, you know, again, this is not an accessory dwelling unit. This is not a mobile manufactured home, which means that some of the restrictions that you cannot place on an accessory dwelling unit. You could place on this. So you could require that the occupant of the. You know, some of the, remember when we talked about the ADUs, you can't say who lives in it, right? It can be whoever. We, that was some of the things that got dialed back. This is not an accessory dwelling unit. So you could require that it be, you know, some familial connection to the property owner. You could require that they be on, not, not be on separate utilities. You could. You know, require, as I said, that they. Not be rented, right? They would need to be owned. So the person could put it on the property for family or whatever. But they're not providing any, they're not renting the, the structure or whatever.
No, it can't become an Airbnb in your front yard.
No, and so, yeah, all of those requirements related to the location, it would still be a structure. So it wouldn't have to meet those requirements. But under a special permit, you know, you could, you could deal with some of that stuff. You know, I think the other thing that makes them a little bit different than some campers, but also for mobile homes, is that we wouldn't want people nor, you know. Attaching decks and porches and all these other things that you see kind of stuck onto some of these other types of units. So I, yeah, I, I think that there's, there's, they sometimes call them micro-units. Cottage units, I've seen the term, you could call them tiny homes. But I think there's enough, enough distinction in the design that we could, we could come up with something.
And they have real electrical service, so it's not like an extension board run across the front lawn to it.
Um, there's a lot of different options, including off-grid solar panel options. But my grandmother actually has a hookup so we could run electrical from her house to, to the tiny house on wheels. But we would actually probably, if it was permissible, prefer the, the off-grid option for electricity, just because it's. More sustainable to begin with, but a little bit more autonomy in that sense.
That was my question. The issue was utilities, like septic. What are you guys gonna do with that? Is it gonna dump the tanks or? Or what's the answer with that?
We would, we would have to look into that. You know, Mike was saying there could be restrictions on no compost toilet. But if it, if that is an option, that's something that we are willing to do as, as occupants. Once again. That's a sustainable option so that you're not utilizing so much, we're wasting so much water flushing. But i- if we could hook it up to a main, we could do that. I'm not really sure how that works, but obviously, we can do our due diligence and research. And figure that portion out.
So yeah.
That was a good question we had last time, was utilities were the big issue between the water and electric. Cause the building department was saying they want you to hook up to like a full service or a full septic and, which is insane.
May require something like.
But the health code, the health code's gonna require, number one, the septic system that's on the property right now is probably not big enough to handle another bathroom. So you're gonna have a challenge there. Number two, building code not gonna allow you to just plug in. You're gonna have to run a temporary service or, or something. Now, is this, now you say it's on a trailer, so it's, it's registered? So you have to register it so they can transport it or?
There is different types of terminology registration. I'll have to look into that more, but I mean, these are.
If it's considered a motor vehicle, then it's considered a camper.
It's not, it's not considered a motor vehicle. It doesn't have any, it doesn't have an engine. It has to be transported by another vehicle. You can't move it on its own.
But if it has to be registered, then it's considered a vehicle, or it's gonna have to, it's a tow behind camper. Regardless of the structure and what is built and all that, the health code, you're gonna have a problem with. The building department, you're definitely gonna have a problem with. It's a very small lot. You're putting it on now. It's less than an acre. So logistically, how's that gonna work? You know.
So another, another. Option is that my grandparents have an, an extension of their property that runs closer to Griffin Road. That they would be, if there's complications with their, it being on their property, we do have the option to put it on our own property. And my grandparents would be willing to sell that portion of their property to us, and then it would be, it would be a standalone, but the tiny house on just that property.
There's no city water. There's no city water out there. There's no city sewer.
What about rainwater collection? Is that not an option?
Health department, I don't think will allow that.
I think that just to keep, again, to keep it high level, the only thing that, we're not gonna do anything about the health code stuff, right? If the health code says you have to connect to X, Y, and Z and you have to have running water. Satisfy that. We will, I'll, I'll certainly try to hammer out how the building code handles this. What, what obligations, if any, you would have in trying to get this permitted. And so I think Lucy, the thing that I would do for, on your end, is I would reach out to North Central Health District. Which is the, the town's regional health department to try to understand what requirements you'd have to basically. Design to. You, you know, as, as Joe mentioned. If you're ha, if you're adding a bedroom, you have to be able to demonstrate that the system that you are connecting to can handle the additional bedroom. Sometimes it can, sometimes it can't. And then there are differences in the health code where you have two detached structures pumping to the same system. So I would touch base with them on, on that part of it.
I, I, I think she's gonna get nowhere doing that at all. I think they're just gonna shoot her down. Let's look into what the state of Maine did, cause this is, this is new territory we're, we're going to here. We, we know that she's not gonna meet the regulations. Period. Everybody's gonna shoot her down. She's not gonna get anywhere.
It's Maine. They don't have any health codes.
Well, so we're, we need, we need to kind of proceed forwarding and kind of, you know. Change your regulations or, or something. This is gonna be coming up more and more and more. I mean, she's trying to take care of her eighty-year-old parents. Whi- which is, you know, nobody wants to put a, a, a house to do that. I mean, this is.
And all the houses that are close by my grandparents are nine hundred thousand dollars. That's just not affordable for, excuse me, but a millennial. Like myself, not feasible.
I, I think we're gonna see this more and more and more, and we have to kind of do something.
But he does, yeah, we can change town regulations, but the state health code is a state regulation. And we aren't gonna be able to change it, you know? The state health department has to change it.
What if, what if you go the opposite route? What if you start thinking about this more like a camper? Where a camper is self-contained, you do a pump and haul, you have your own water tanks, it's all stuff. You dry camp, you can go out in the middle of anywhere, and you can, you know, have your own power source, your own water source. You, you have your holding tanks, so, I mean, if we kind of looked at it down that road. If, if it were for the sole purpose of aiding, you know, an elderly family member, maybe we can look at something to allow. Self-contained units on a, on a annual renewal basis or something like that. So it's not permitted forever. It's an annual renewable permit based on the need, something to that effect.
The health department may have a solution for her too. I mean, she needs to talk to them.
I would stay away from the camping where. Cause if they, you default to, you're gonna consider camping, then they're just gonna default to. You know. They're not gonna go for it. That's gonna be an upward battle for them. And I don't think they'll go for a containment, a pumping. They're just gonna be very difficult.
Our hands are kind of tied.
Right, that's, so I think it's important to talk to North Central Health District and understand what you'd have to do to satisfy them.
Okay, yeah, I mean, there's lots of options. There's just so many options. I'm just looking at this. Builder in New Hampshire, and they have all these questions. What kind of water connections do you supply? What kind of sewer hookups do you provide? What kind of electric, electrical connection? Like they have, you know, NOAA certified, you know, they have, they can be built to, can be built to RV standards, including electricity, plumbing. Fire help and life and safety, all of that. There's, you know, they're thinking through all of those things and, and. We can find some, either build something that meets those criteria or find something that already meets that criteria.
What if it was considered just a dwell, just a, a sleeping? You know, like, this is just where we're gonna sleep, you know, ninety percent of our time is gonna be spent in the house. Yeah, I mean, could, could they get away with that?
The health code, I think, is gonna require that if they're there, they have access to all of the standard facilities that. Someone would expect to have in, in a finished space. And, and under the health code, if it meets the requirements of a bedroom, even if they say they wanna put a, a desk there and call it a detached office. It's gonna be a, they're gonna call it a bedroom.
Lots of people have sheds in their backyard. What says you can't add insulation to a shed and make it into a bedroom?
You could, but I think that they're, they're gonna want. Some of those facilities to be provided for. I don't think you could make a living space and have it be detached. I guess if you didn't provide any kind of plumbing, but if they had, it'd be tricky. I, I don't think she's gonna strike out.
We can, yeah. No, she won't strike out. She just needs to understand what they are going to require.
Would it be fair to, to say that if, if we can get a, a more. Sort of dialed-in answer from, on the building side and regarding the health stuff, that it would be worth her at that point pursuing a text amendment? If she understood those two components and how they related so that you guys knew what that meant?
Yeah, the health department's gonna be the big one.
Okay.
You just have to design to what they require. And, and the other thing I would ask in an amendment, that it be limited to one on a property. That you couldn't put like ten of them in the backyard.
I only need one.
No tiny home parks.
Okay, I will. Rigor with you, Mike, and have you help me digest all this, but thank you guys so much for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business is appointing Danielle Miller, the new zoning. Um, official. Welcome Danielle. Nice to see you in person and meet you. Welcome to the town of East Windsor. We're glad to have you onboard. Is there anything you'd like to say to introduce yourself before we take up appointing you? You're on mute.
So, and just wanna clarify before she starts talking that. We would ask that you move to have her be an additional zoning enforcement. Yeah, so that we can have backup for each other. And it doesn't undo everything that I've done already.
I'll move for anything as long as I don't have to do it.
Does Danielle need to get certified? Is there some like state requirement?
So she has three years to get her certification per, per, her job description. And it's, it's done in phases. Like I've got the technician level, have one more year to go before I can. Submit for my. Certified zoning official. So it's just, it's a process. You have to have years of experience under your belt. So, and Danielle, do you wanna provide a little background for the commission? Your opportunity to hear where you've been and what you've been up to?
Hello, everyone. I'm, I'm very excited to be here. I came up here from Gretna, Louisiana, where I was the. Planner for the city for the last four years. And then recently, in the last year, was certified in green infrastructure, so I'm very interested in environmental work, especially with planning. And I think up here in Connecticut, it's wonderful to me that there's so much focus on the wetlands, watercourses. I. Absolutely love that and I'm excited I get to work a little bit more with that as a planner. As Ruth said, it's a little bit of a process to get certified as a zoning enforcement officer here. We didn't, we didn't have that down there. I have already joined the zoning enforcement officer association. I think, I don't know if that's the technical term. And with that, got on the list to start knowing when the next set of classes are going to be. I believe there's a waiting list for the first one that's. There already, but I will be absolutely in on anything I can get in with them and, and get that certification as soon as I am able to as going through the process. No, I'm, I'm very excited to be here. I'm very, been trying to soak everything up. I had my first week, so. So it was my first day of my second week and I'm just trying to kind of get on board, learn the code and, and meet everyone and really dig in.
Any questions from the commission or statements before we look for a motion?
There's plenty of work to do.
That's good.
Lucky Frank's not here. He'd be giving it to you already.
Got a date to go look at some wet backyard on Reservoir Road tomorrow.
Okay, well, would somebody like to make a motion, um, appointing. Danielle Miller, the additional zoning enforcement officer for the town of East Windsor.
Joe, I think I heard you volunteer.
Well, would be my pleasure to appoint Danielle Miller as an additional zoning enforcement agent. Or officer, sorry, not agent.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Great, that's unanimous. Welcome aboard, Danielle, and congratulations.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
Me too.
Our next order of business is the Warehouse Point Study zoning regulation approach.
All right, well, Mike and I have been putting our heads together, um. For what's next on our agenda of things to work on. We, our next meeting, you know, we have our. A public hearing on the planned commercial development and accessory dwelling units. So we thought, hmm, what should we start thinking about at this meeting and Warehouse Point Study and a a an approach to. How we want to handle zoning to get that look and feel and sense of place. And Mike, um, has some ideas about merging some of the zones that were proposed. As well as, um, taking a different tact with form-based code. Leave it to Mike to give us some more description on that.
So, um. Since we we finished the Warehouse Point Planning Study, it's been sort of the monkey on our back, right? We had all this work that you guys did and trying to figure out what to do with it and the best way to implement it. The thing that we've really struggled with is that the the study basically suggests that. You adopt seven new zoning. Designations, new zones for an area that is incredibly small. And trying to make all that work, trying to write regulations that are separate and distinct and don't have overlap with what we already have. Um, and then administer. Seven additional zones was is is complicated and and. You also then create a situation where zones that you have established to work for Warehouse Point. The requirements may work for others in other areas of town, and you run the risk of having people who want zone changes to take. Zones that we intend for Warehouse Point to be, you know, planted in other in other locations in town, so. I started looking through everything, and as Ruth mentioned, we've been mulling this over and and. We kind of stumbled onto this idea of a form-based code, um, and that is. I guess. It's based on the fact, it's it's based on the idea that you you move away from what we have. The zone in the zoning regs now, which is referred to as Euclidean zone. And and we kind of get away from regulating. Um, the specifics of maybe the exact building height. And the exact number of parking spaces and the exact use in this building and the next building and the next building. And we're really focused strongly on design. We focus strong on how the buildings interact with the street. We focus on, um, how they relate to the buildings to their left and to their right and and across the street. We focus on pedestrian amenities, you know, sidewalks and bike racks and benches, et cetera. So I put together a couple of quick, a couple of quick things I just want to show you, and I. I didn't put it into PowerPoint because I wanted this to be overly formal, but it's the easiest way to share my screen. Um, so hopefully it's, you know, for you to be able to see. Are you, can you see the right screen? Are you looking at the?
I can see the table.
You're not seeing the presenter view?
No, I don't see your notes on the side, if that's what you're asking.
All right, perfect. So so this is, this is what the Warehouse Point regs currently suggest. This is from the planning study and what, so I put this together, when you start looking at the. Uh, the columns, the left col- the left column is all of the uses that are proposed to be allowed. And the right column is the the new proposed zones in which they are proposed to be allowed or allowable. And if you start to look. Particularly with BR MS one and MS two, which are the the categories, for example. They have a significant overlap. You have a lot of uses which are allowed both in the MS one and MS two. And then the BR, the MS one and the MS two, you have a lot of that overlap, and so. That was sort of the first step in us looking at it and saying, there's an awful lot of similarities between a couple of these zones. And I think it warrants looking at how we can consolidate so that we don't end up with seven new. You know, a new zoning designations. This is the, um, sort of the neighborhood map or the proposed, um. Area or mapping sections which they use to derive those zoning categories. Um, particularly when you start looking at sort of this the central portion with the blues, the the sort of the darker orange and the green. And even this this Bridge Street West pink, they're very, very small areas. They have a very. A very limited number of properties, and when you start thinking about writing. Setback requirements and allowed uses. Where you have three or four zones butting up to one another, it again, it becomes very hard to. To create some something that's cohesive. So, I think I'm just gonna kind of go through quickly a couple of of graphics that I pulled to kind of further outline what form-based code is, and then we can go from there. Um, so, and I know some of these are blurry. I tried to make them quite as large as I could, but on the upper left here, traditional zoning versus form-based code. Traditional zoning is what you see on the left. You have a building, we tell them they need a million parking spaces. And they throw some trees in it to make us happy and call it a day. Form-based code is something that you'd see on the right-hand side, where we really look at. How the building interacts with the street. We have pedestrian amenities that we ask them to include, and then. They put the parking in the back, and we we don't get into whether or not it's a doctor's office or a coffee shop. Because. For something like this, when you're trying to create a small-scale village area, you really need to have that synergy of of mixed uses. And, um, kind of get away from regulating the things that don't really affect how something looks. Um, on the on the right-hand side, this is another example of what form-based code really focuses on. So if somebody came in and these, the building on the right and the left were already there. They would come in and say, we want to put up a, you know, a new building and and we want to have, you know. A a doctor's office here and or a coffee shop, and we'd say, okay, well, what are the allowed uses? How many parking spaces do you need? What's your lighting look like? And they would show us, and that would be it. So the bottom example is a traditional. Development of what someone could put there, and the top example shows what the form-based code would obligate the person to establish. So there's a very clear difference in that we are looking at how the building interacts with the street and the adjacent buildings. So you get something that that is sort of more appropriate. Um. And then again, something on the bottom, you know, the conventional zoning, which is basic boilerplate, you put a building on a lot is what you see on the left. You throw in some design guidelines, which is what we're trying to include now, and maybe you get the same building, but it looks a little bit better on the outside. Um, and then a form-based code is an example on the right, which which again really looks at. Regardless of what the interior of the building is going to be used for, how is this building going to look and interact with the street? And these are a little bit blurry, but again, it looks at for a larger area, this sort of. Hierarchy of how the sites are used from an urban core on the right, all the way down to what they're calling a natural zone. And it's this idea that based on the area that you're developing the property, you're gonna have different requirements for for how that building will be laid out on the lot. Um, and then again, here's a couple of examples of the same types of conventional developments. Versus how they can be handled, and I think the right-hand side is a very good example of what we might see in Warehouse Point. We have the Geisler's Plaza, for example, which is a building with a lot of parking. Um, and so when you start looking at. How we want to make that kind of become more comfortable to pedestrians, you start. Trying to move in the direction of what's on the ru- the sort of that lower right. Traditional zoning does not provide for what's on the lower right. You know, pad sites on existing parking lots, buildings up against the property lines in the front with. Patios and and large sidewalks, et cetera. They they don't allow for it. Our regs would not allow for that. Um, and then just kind of the last example, these are some sort of plan view, streetscape. Give you an idea of, you got some building massing, and then sidewalk, bike lane, travel lanes, et cetera. Um, and this is another example on the bottom of of a form-based code. That that base, or a gas station that was designed under a form-based code. So you have a 7-Eleven, which is right up to the street, and then from the main road, which is on the right, you have, um. The gas, the the actual pump islands behind it. Um, so. That's all I have. Um, and real, I guess, the sense today is to just get a feel for what you guys are thinking, and if you think this is worth exploring, and if you. If you like the idea, or if you want to stick to the more traditional. Standard conventional zoning that is kind of explored in the study.
Question for you, Mike, um. Can you have. I'll say Euclidean zoning for most of East Windsor. And just apply this form base in Warehouse Point, or is your thinking to do form-based for the entire town?
No, you would, yeah, form-based codes, as they have been, uh, adopted throughout Connecticut and elsewhere, are generally designed for an area. So we would establish the neighborhoods and, um. The areas that the form-based code applied, and then the, you know, the areas that didn't, it didn't apply. You know, for example, we have a couple of properties that are outliers in the Warehouse Point area, you know, that really large undeveloped piece. Or maybe along the highway, right, where those are more large-scale commercial developments. They're not really. Those would be traditional development under the current regs. And then the more neighborhood type stuff along some of those main dr- streets there. We would, we would set the outer limits of the form-based code.
The way I look at it is it it creates a sense of place. You know how you feel after you've gone down to Essex for an afternoon, like that little village, um. Even, I I live in a historic district and. To have everything kind of fit together. You know, this, it it does give you, you've entered in, you're in a, you're in a place. And it's a subset of of the whole.
Yeah, I had a feeling that's what Terry Han's plan was trying to accomplish. Maybe it wasn't the right way to get there. But getting Warehouse Point to be a place.
Right, you have gateways and streetscapes and.
And multi-use, so that you could have residential and commercial together.
Well, it's kind of heading that way when the casino come in and the train station come in, and that was kind of the thought. Process behind that whole thing, but whatever makes Mike's life easier, I say we do.
I I think it's a really interesting. Process, you know, pro- process to go through, and I I think there's a lot, there is a lot that is is really already there that we. That if we kind of tie it all together, it could be really interesting. Ruth and I had a meeting, an informal kind of. Heads-up meeting with an engineer and a property owner who owns a property in in that district, and. They were really thinking about trying to do something that was mixed use. They wanted to do some residential component with a commercial component. And the zoning regulations don't support it. So you have someone who's who's saying, maybe we can do something, small commercial up front, an office or a coffee shop, and then some residential in the back. And our regs, as we have them now, wouldn't provide for it, so that was really the ball that got this. You know, got the ball rolling, because we said, well, let's figure out how we can start. Uh, getting this off the ground, because I don't want him to show up and do a text amendment to a zoning regulation. When we all agree that the ideas in the Warehouse Point Planning Study should be implemented. Um, so that's kind of what got us here.
Any other thoughts from people?
I I think this is right down the avenue of what we're trying to accomplish. Because so much of what there is already non-conforming use, so you have to kind of come up with its own. List of zones or or zone regs, you know, in lack of a better definition, that's. I think what we were trying to accomplish in the first place.
Yep. Oh, and I think it's a nice way to try to get where we wanted to go. I just wonder if maybe downtown Broadbrook needs the same thing. And I don't know if you can like carve out multiple places and apply the same thing, and I don't know if it would work for Broadbrook.
I think that. You know, there are. Broadbrook is is inherently, I think, a little bit more residential. But I think that a lot of the concepts and certainly the design criteria that we'll, we might ultimately point to. A lot of these codes, they say this is basically, here's some photos of in of what we're looking for, right? We tell you, this is what we want. We really strong design guidelines. We may ultimately find that those design guidelines are appropriate everywhere in town, and and we incorporate them into the zoning regs more formally. Which would work for for Broadbrook as well.
It may be that Broadbrook needs a different look. You know, because it seemed like Terry Han was pushing a farmhouse style and a certain style look. For Warehouse Point, and maybe that's not the look of Broadbrook. Don't know.
Did you see the, did you see the comments when they put on Facebook about the Opera House, when they painted it?
Well, it sounds to me like everybody feels like you're headed the right way. Unless somebody wants to disagree.
More to come on this.
I don't know, maybe it's easier to move to Russia. Like you said.
Oh, my goodness.
You know, I was looking. I was looking, I I looked at the GIS, every house around him is all, everything's B two. Except for you got R two where the farm is, or A one. And then there's a B one down, a B B one down the street, but everything else is B two.
Oh, I was why I asked the spot zoning question. Correspondence. Uh, or if you want to explain to people your.
Sure.
Correspondence that you wanted to raise?
Yes, the correspondence came as an invitation from Mike. He is his company, Taikey, is working with Halloran and Sage. Um, on a, uh, learning opportunity, the Zoom meeting on March third at seven PM. And, um. Mike, you want to give details on? This touches on cannabis too, right? If I remember right.
So, yeah, I mean, a bunch of our towns have have had some commission changeover and just with everything going on with statutes and et cetera. We were trying to just get a a training overview put together, um. So that folks that have questions or just wanted to have that check in, like I said, um, a number of other towns, and we have some commissions that have. Three and four members that are totally new, um, and have never done this before and and have been thrown into all these things changing, so. This is a, it's basically gonna be an hour, uh, it's gonna be, um. Presented by Halloran Sage, their land use folks, Ken Slater and Rich Roberts. Um, who we work with in a number of other towns and only, we're only advertising it basically to. Taikey clients, so it's not gonna be a hundred and fifty people. And the idea is just a, an overview of what it means to be a planning and zoning commissioner. You know, what, uh, how do you have an effective meeting, what some do's and don'ts? Um, what has changed with the statutes, just a high-level overview kind of to set the table. Um, because, you know, things like Wesleyan only happen every other year, and, um, we just wanted to make folks aware. We just wanted to make folks aware. It's, it's going to be via Zoom for an hour. It's free of charge, very, very informal, but wanted to pass it along.
I'll email it out to the, the commission if you care to register. I was confusing this one with the, it must be Casio has the one with the kind of the design specifications or site plan review for cannabis cultivation.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll be getting this invite if you'd like to register.
Yes.
Under business meeting, you have registration nomination, Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Commissioners, 74th Annual Conference.
Yes, so Katrina has registered Jim, Mike, Frank, Joe, David and me to attend. And we've nominated Jim and Frank for recognition.
Thank you.
You muted, Jim.
Does Frank got 85 years in?
In the 25-year category, the lifetime achievement award.
Hope he gets a plaque for his wall.
Be nice.
Anything under executive session?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chairman, before you move off of that, you just said something that reminded me. We are going to be doing a, presenting a plaque to Joe Lett next Thursday for 19 years of service. So if anybody from the PCC would like to attend in person, that's been ordered and, and it's on the agenda.
He deserves it.
He does. Thank you for doing that.
Do you know if that was picked up yet, Jason?
Uh, yeah, it's in my office.
Phew, okay.
Anything else? Jason, do you want to add anything before we adjourn?
So I, I joined obviously very late to your meeting, but if, so I'm not sure what you talked about that I could provide some color on. I will say, and I don't know if Ruth covered this or not, but this morning we presented at the North Central Connecticut Chamber of Commerce's Economic Development Breakfast, some of the things that East Windsor is trying to do from a recruitment perspective, from a retention perspective, and from an overall attitudes perspective. Many, if not most of those topics would have come through or from PCC. So we talked about the developable properties list, some of the outreach we've done to, to businesses for concept plan reviews and, and the plan development district stuff. The race grants, some of the business showcase stuff that's happening on the website. There's a, actually, it's a pretty extensive list when I actually sat down with Mike and Ruth to write it. So I just wanted to let you know that, that the town has gotten some good recognition from neighbors in the area about the things that we're doing. And one of the things that I highlighted in that is the importance of having the, the major decision-making boards all on the same page and rowing in the same direction. And, and certainly, especially with the concept plan approval stuff, that the support the PCC has shown for that is, is going to pay off. And, you know, I just wanted you guys to know that I appreciate that and that it's been shared with other towns as a success strategy.
We appreciate your support along the way too. And somebody at some point during the meeting said Rand Quaid, is that true?
Rand resigned, and he's no longer with us. The, the real bump in the road was that the planning clerk or the, I'm sorry, the permitting clerk in the building office, Ginny Powers retired or submitted her intention to retire the next day, effective that day. So that took us from a two-and-a-half-person department down to a half-person department real quick. So I contracted with the town of South Windsor. We're required under state law to have a building official. It's 2260A requires that we have a building official. So I contracted with the town of South Windsor on a, a regional approach. They're also providing the same service to the town of Windsor. So their building office is right now covering all three towns, which puts some strain on, on the folks who are employed by South Windsor who are, who are delivering that service. But it does provide consistency in process amongst three towns that are contiguous, two of whom are on fire from an economic development perspective. So it's a short-term solution while we get our feet underneath us and actually assess what the longer-term solution is. But the, the pressure of what are we going to do only lasted for a day or two. And then the solution was there at least as a bridge. We'll see how, how this arrangement works out. But, you know, I mean, if, if there's an opportunity for us to provide equal or better service and maybe save some money along the way, you know, that's something that may present itself down the road.
Was it a total surprise that, did he like get another job and, or retire?
No, it was, it was a surprise that I think was a culmination of some things. I don't know what.
I didn't, I guess I'm so clueless.
Well, so he had originally, originally told me he planned to retire in February of '24. And then that became 1/1/23, and then that became April 1 of this year. And finally, it became, he was leaving.
So he was ready to retire?
Yeah, his, his comment to me in the exit interview was, was just, he was tired.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think Rand had a hand in quite a lot of the development that's happened in East Windsor over the last 20 years. Certainly, you'd be hard-pressed to find two guys in the state who knew the code as well as he did. So, you know, he's, he's put in his time. He's done his service.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's just, I'll say, different for us because we're used to him being there. Right? And I had no idea until someone said it during this meeting. Okay. Anything else? Anybody has?
So, and you didn't get an email from me the day he left?
No.
Okay, that's my mistake that I, I.
That's okay. It's really none of my business. It's curiosity. The only reason I was asking is I've taken out plenty of building permits and, you know, he's been there to do what he needed to do.
I, I had sent an email to all town-wide users. I had thought that the board and commission chairs were on that distribution, so that, that's my mistake.
That's not a problem.
Acknowledgement.
It's curiosity.
It's a small town. We're, we're already got around.
I only deal with him when I take out a building permit.
Similar to Joe Lett, 20 years of service is 20 years of service and should be.
Oh, yeah. That's a long time. Anybody else have anything? Okay, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion re-adjourn.
Sir, a second? Somebody has to second. Okay. So it's 8:09, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is adjourned. Oh, we didn't vote. I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just assumed. Okay. 8:09, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.